He was there.
Seven o'clock, I call this April ninth, two thousand eighteen. Lord. Keep us all in your thoughts and prayers. New income, new incoming Alderman mayor.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
March twelfth, two thousand eighteen, the board of Alderman met in regular session with Mayor Hewnall presiding. Alderman present Rene Edwards, Rick Winter, Doc Kriksizer, Delmer Strange, Ryan Mason, absent none. Mayor Hewnall called the meeting to order and gave the invocation. The pledge of allegiance was recited. Minutes of the February twelfth meeting were read and with the change of Joe Demett's license from DS three to DS two, because of work experience time, the minutes were approved. Collectors and treasurers reports were given. Motion was made by Ryan Mason and seconded by Delmer Strange to pay all bills as presented. Motion carried unanimously. Through citizen comments, Echo reported there was a great turnout for the trivia event. Echo also reported later in the meeting that the Edina Sentinel, one of the oldest businesses in Knox County, would be celebrating its one hundred and fiftieth birthday with an event to be held on April twenty first at the community center and invited the board members and mayor to attend. Department reports Joe Demett Superintendent of Utilities met with the board. He presented a copy of Mike Wright's monthly report for the wastewater treatment facility. The average daily flow for February was a hundred and ninety-five thousand gallons per day, which calculates out to eighty-eight percent of the design flow. He stated that it had been a rough month at the facility with water leaks and a power outage, but that everything is getting back into shape. Three water leaks in the last forty-five days at the plant, possibly because the old water line is too thin, and that he would contact Mark Ross for a possible solution. He also stated that the UV parts are in and that Mike is waiting on scheduling. Demett reported that he had picked up the trailer last week. The light has been put up on Main Street. Two water leaks in town have been found that could account for some of the water loss. Fence around the building that has been torn down has been removed. The road tube on Morgan Street has been replaced and that several loads of rock have been placed in driveways and potholes. He also stated that he has requested prices for cold patch from the Laughlins and has requested prices for dumpsters from Merkels for spring cleanup. The crew has also been busy cutting brush and they would put up another caution sign for children playing near Daryl Kluckey's house. Jim Lyon and John Hills with Mark Twain Communications met with the board and reported that they are wanting to construct a building and a self-support tower under two hundred feet tall on property they are attempting to acquire on North Main Street, stating that the water tower is full and then they, and that they need more room. New technology is requiring taller towers and more antennas, which would be an, which would be an advanced upgrade for Edina and would benefit the city with tax revenue. It was the consensus of the board that if all things were cleared through the city attorney to let Mark Twain Communications proceed with the project. Philip Spory met with the board and presented a written proposal for a recreation complex at the Edina City Lake. The board agreed that there needs to be a three to five-year plan established and to reach out to the community for assistance and possible grants. Rick Winter suggested forming a committee to proceed with this project. The board thanked Philip for his presentation. Ryan Bishop, chief of police, met with the board. He gave the board a written report, which included some of the calls the police department has responded to in the last month. He also reported that he was waiting to send letters to residents accumulating an excessive amount of unsightly junk so that they would have the opportunity to take advantage of spring cleanup. Under unfinished business, Echo will be running a story about the applications needed for the Community Development Block Grant Demo Project projected to happen in two thousand and nineteen. Under new business, bids were open for hay around the city lake and wastewater treatment facility. Steve Applegate submitted a bid for five hundred and thirteen dollars or thirteen dollars and fifty cents per acre. Gary Mallett submitted a bid for sixty-five dollars per acre. Motion was made by Rene Edwards to accept the bid of Gary Mallett for sixty-five dollars per acre, seconded by Ryan Mason. Motion carried unanimously. The board tentatively set April seventeenth and eighteenth as spring cleanup dates pending availability of dumpsters. Rick Winter read in its entirety Resolution seven oh one, a resolution of intent to participate in natural hazard mitigation and to work toward becoming a safer community. Motion was made by Rick Winter, seconded by Rene Edwards, to adopt Resolution number seven oh one. Motion carried unanimously. Under Alderman comments, Rene expressed appreciation to Ron York and his crew for the emergency demolition performed. Mayor Hewnall thanked Joe Demett and Ryan Bishop for their quick response to the emergency situation. Motion was made by Rene Edwards and seconded by Delmer Strange to adjourn. Motion carried and the meeting was adjourned. So those are approved. There was a special meeting on March twenty-sixth. Board of Alderman met in special session with Mary Eric Hewnall presiding. Alderman present Rene Edwards, Rick Winter, Doc Kriksizer, Delmer Strange, Ryan Mason, absent none. Mayor Hewnall called the meeting to order and gave the invocation. Pledge of allegiance was recited by those present. The board reviewed the city's current unsafe building ordinance and then compared it to a model unsafe building ordinance provided by the Missouri Municipal League. They also compared these to similar ordinances for two other towns in northeast Missouri. There was discussion about the similarities and differences in these ordinances. No action was taken by the board at this time. Mayor Hewnall suggested that the members of the board take copies of the ordinance, of these ordinances home so they can be prepared to discuss them further at the next regular meeting. Motion was made by Rene Edwards and seconded by Delmer Strange to adjourn. Motion carried and the meeting was adjourned.
Collections for March two thousand eighteen. Water eighteen thousand seven hundred thirty-nine dollars and fifty-nine cents. Sewer twenty-one thousand five hundred fifty-six dollars and ninety-four cents. Sanitation fifteen thousand four hundred seventy dollars and eighty-five cents. General fund nine thousand six hundred fifty-two dollars and four cents. Recreation two hundred forty-two dollars. Street seven hundred twenty-six dollars and fifty-five cents. Special lights five hundred thirty-nine dollars and eighty-nine cents. Meter deposit six hundred sixty dollars. For total collected of sixty-seven thousand five hundred eighty-seven dollars and eighty-six cents. I also, you have in front of you a copy of the delinquent property tax list along with other delinquent accounts. In regard to the other delinquent accounts, I would propose that we write off one and two. I would like to be able to move them to bad debt within our system. In the event that any of these customers won't service with us again, we can collect them at that time.
Which ones Kathy?
Uh, one and two. We've collected several, as you can see from that.
Do you, some of them that I looked through seem to be the ones, some of them pay after they get their income tax refunds.
Yeah.
Do you have that situation?
That's not gonna happen with those top two though.
No.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
So one and two. Go ahead and move them over to bad debt.
I will make a motion to, um, write off the accounts of, of one and two up here. Can you?
I'll second that. Okay, thank you. As of this time, real estate, we've collected ninety-seven percent and personal property, we've collected ninety-four percent. And if I can collect those confidential papers.
Thank you Kathy. Nice Peggy, how are you?
And I really don't have anything to report, so, um, Margaret and I will catch up after tax season and do anything we need to do at that point, but unless you've got questions, she'll probably be the one to answer them.
I don't have any questions if you're pertinent to the future. I don't have any questions.
You don't have any questions? Okay, I'll let you move on then.
Metro bills? Most everybody's had a chance to look at them. Any of them stand up?
No, I didn't see them. I didn't know.
Chair would entertain most of the pace of bills.
I'll make the motion to pay the bills.
All in favor? Everybody present? Unfinished business? Unfinished business would be the water tower, the that's not coming to fruition, is it? Mark Twain or not Mark Twain by USB. We haven't received any of that from them.
Uh, no, we have not heard from
So that's ongoing.
Any of them or the city attorney?
That's ongoing, alright. Under old business would be ordinances fall there? So is it a saving?
The ones that you looked at, the special meeting, you mean?
They're not passing along.
Yeah, you can talk about it. I mean, cause it's old business.
Right.
Are you talking about? The ordinance we had the special meeting about? I skimmed through them and I think they're pretty detailed and I think ours is these tweaks somewhat, don't you think? Is there anything major overhaul on them?
You have to detail, have to show and waddle.
I don't know if I'm triggered that, but that's the next decision.
Well, it means you're enforcing ordinances if you did that. Alrighty, is there any other unfinished business? No other unfinished business? Certification of the April third election.
Yeah.
I'll let you. I'll let you, everybody can hear you.
Okay, we received the certification of the election of Marlene, uh, for mayor, two-year term. Eric Hewnall received seventy-five votes. Steve Peters received two hundred and eleven. No write-ins. For Alderman, the first ward, two-year term, David Buu received seventy-six votes. Rene Edwards, fifty-five. Weldon Woodward, five, and no write-ins. For Alderman, the second ward, two-year term, Ryan Mason received forty-eight votes and there was one write-in. For Alderman, the third ward, uh, two-year term, Rick Yocum received eighty-six votes and there were no write-ins. The question of the local use tax passed, the yes, was a hundred and sixty-six votes and no, a hundred and three votes.
Alrighty. Now we gotta go to those of office.
Do we have to make a motion to accept?
Well, you can.
Well, my
Have to.
Okay.
It's certified.
It's certified. We're good then?
Okay. Oh, there's Rick Winter. So, uh, this, you know, finishes up this board and I assume everyone, you know, wants to express their appreciation to Eric for serving his, his time as mayor and
For twenty years of service.
Rene for twenty years.
He enjoyed it.
And we have a, a little something for you. You smell smoky, is that what you're smelling?
I don't smell it.
Well, it's been nice to work with everybody.
So Rene. Oh, well, thank you. Twenty years while you tend to be a lot of my
I think I've missed, have I missed two or three? Is that all?
I was gonna say, yeah.
I think maybe one, but might be two. Well, thank you so much. I've enjoyed it and don't regret it at all.
Well, I'm in the new board.
Oh, so, so yeah, you know, stay around because we're going to have some refreshments.
Mr. Peters, your seat.
So we will swear you in, Steve, Rick, David, and Ryan. And Ryan knows probably over by the flag is a good
Just along this wall, if you don't mind. Right there, Steve.
Well, you can call me, I'm fine.
Got them all?
Can you scoot down a little? Ryan, get the other side of the flag. Just everyone scoot just about a foot. Okay, okay.
So now you got them all?
I've got you all.
Okay. Do you solemnly swear that you possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office that you have been elected, that you will support the Constitution of the United States and of the state of Missouri, the provisions of all laws of this state affecting cities of the fourth class and the ordinances of the city of Edina, and will faithfully demean yourself while in office?
Thank you. Are you sure? I'll move this camera so you can see what's, ooh, thank you. I'm just not used to it. I've seen it. I'm just not Uh, I will turn this livestream around so you could see what's going on. There's a recess happening. And a small reception for outgoing council members, um, I'm tempted to just leave it on. I don't know how long it's gonna last. I would like to go eat a cookie.
See, I've been there for a while here, yeah.
That's it, I'll be out there.
Mike, you're serving anything, that's why I'm here.
Well, I think you're a man, you know it.
Yeah.
Need to get something.
Yeah. I didn't dish you. Hot hole step. Could be more time to stop. Mower and then because you weren't there on the morning. You have your water off the road before you build a road skating, that's what it takes to with the motor sitting in this now? You know, if you just want to call it, save money, it takes that. Takes two guys to set a manor there. Yeah. No, they even finish the roads, people just drive faster. Yeah, I like the thought. I like thought a lot. Yeah. June, end of June. Books, there's more, I don't know how much more, but I'm just being on the book.
I deposited one next time, I mean, I trust you, it was like, that's kinda odd, you know? Margaret hadn't told me that she didn't clear anything.
And whoever was driving, whatever it was, it pulled up.
A siren light?
Something popped off in the side of the truck. First I thought it was the phone pole, but I'm pretty sure it sounded like a classic.
He doesn't, he could drive.
Margaret, I can do that.
They were in such a hurry.
I can help you, Kathy, you just help me. I think last month I said
He's right across. Oh yeah, maybe one buggies.
Well, Margaret, that's true.
There's a lot of people in the camp around it.
Draw security. We can draw security. Right.
You can't read my writing, I'm here to get it. Excuse me?
And then you should put mayor in there.
So we got to watch it.
Sounded together.
I was thinking it was cold and raining, I didn't understand how that mattered. Well, I was watching too.
I'm supposed to do that, I'm supposed to do this. Once we're ready, just kinda call it back, meeting back to order. Okay. I guess we're ready to call this meeting back to order. I guess start off with, I'm kinda new on this, so work with me. Before we get started here in staffs, so, uh, I guess we wanna start with citizens. No, man, that's what, I guess Philip?
Yes.
Do you have something you?
Well, I don't have anything for today. I just was curious, they tabled, uh, the proposal that I presented last time, they, uh, tabled it till this time, and I was just wanting to see if you guys were gonna move forward with this or had any time to look over, I guess I should ask that. Did, did you all happen to look over that that I presented to you all last time?
Yeah, well, we got three new people.
This will be a new board.
Yeah.
Yeah, so maybe we need to look over it. I don't know what it was.
That's fine, yeah.
Three of us don't know what it was, so
Uh, David, did you get that? I did email it to you.
Yep.
Okay, could you have time to look over that?
Not really.
Okay, that's fine, um.
Not close enough.
Huh?
Not close enough.
Okay, that's fine, um. No, I'll, I'll get you a copy of it if you want and, um, yeah.
Get Rick a copy and tell him so we can, cause I don't know.
Rick got a copy last time he was here.
I would hear that.
Okay. Okay.
We'll look it over and then, then we'll, I guess, table it till next month.
Okay, no, that's fine, I just wanted to check, so, alright.
So
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Anyway, we're on the I just know anything else on that, so. You better, uh, is Ed still here? Yeah, back or back, whatever.
Thank you, thank you.
Well, it is that time again where we look at employees' health insurance. And, uh, I have before you, uh, the renewal information as well as an alternative. Anthem is offering to renew the current plan exactly as it is with no changes, which is rare. At an eleven percent increase in cost. Just as a reference, uh, when we did this last year, the figures for the city in comparison was thirty-seven hundred a month. And you can see by the personnel change over the last year, the cost of the insurance has dropped significantly. So even with the renewal cost So even with the renewal cost increase, it's still about a hundred dollars less than where we were at the same time last year, which I think is pretty good news, and that's because you have younger people, and us old people are expensive to keep around. Until we get to be a cer- of that certain age.
Yes.
And then, then the costs go way down. Uh, and that's what we have done in case where we had employees who became eligible for Medicare. Uh, they have gone off the city's insurance and onto Medicare's primary with a supplementary plan. And then, uh, that has resulted in a substantial savings for the city. Medicare is primary for groups that are under twenty, and of course, the city falls in that category. I would like to just address the, uh, the recommendation at the bottom as an option. It does significantly raise the cost to employees, and as you can see, the savings just isn't there. Looking at twenty-eight hundred and fifteen dollars a month versus twenty-nine oh four, uh, I personally don't think it's worth going to the higher deductible to save less than a hundred dollars a month. You know, if we were in a position where we were much higher than what it was at this time last year, then I think it would be appropriate to look at some changes. But I just don't really think that that's appropriate at this time. And that's my recommendation, is that you accept the renewal as is, it renews May first. Uh, we have other companies that we represent, but, uh, what you would be giving up to give another company, uh, for example, our firm is with United Healthcare. United Healthcare does offer excellent coverage in this area, but the policy, uh, is not as good as the policy the city has. Right now, you have unlimited office visits. Uh, the United Healthcare comparable plan limits it to three office visits, then your expenses go to the deductible. So Anthem has a similar plan, uh, but the cost savings for Anthem is just not there. The other thing that I don't like about the Anthem plan that limits on office visit is it changes the prescription coverage to a more narrow formulary than what it's supposed to be. And we have tried to steer clients away from that lower, that, uh, more restrictive formulary because people get in a situation where the medicine that they're taking isn't covered under the plan, they have to change to another medication. And that, that i- is not a good situation for your employees to be in. That's why I haven't recommended a more severe plan. I'm open to your questions, I will tell you right now, that Anthem is in negotiations with Northeast Regional. And we don't know where those negotiations are going. If, uh, you have a health system which operates Northeast Regional and Moberly Regional is not successful, it will not be a network hospital. Uh, and I believe that that timeframe is summer. I've spoken to people at Northeast Regional, uh, they were not aware of the number of policyholders that we have in this area with Anthem. And we gave them figures on both individual policies, and this also affects groups like the city. And they were surprised when they saw those numbers. So, uh, they asked for additional people at Anthem to talk to, I provided that to Anthem, and Anthem has contacted, uh, the hospital as of today. I think probably the negotiations have been done at corporate level and not at the Kirksville Hospital level. And obviously, they want to be able to continue to serve people in this area. The only individual insurance that people can buy now is with Anthem Blue Cross. There are no other company available in this area. So if they lose commercial insurance for Anthem, they're going to lose a lot of potential patients at Northeast Regional. And that's what we've told them. Uh, I realize it's tough times, you know, for hospitals trying to make money, but, uh, losing the best paying customers is not the right answer. We had a similar experience that occurred with Boone Hospital. Boone got sideways with Anthem and said they would not be a network provider. And this last fall, they laid off two hundred employees because their hospital census was down so much. Uh, I'm not sure if that same thing would not, because they were left with Medicaid and Medicare patients and those who have other health insurance, and it just, it hurt them. So we're hopeful that they will come to an understanding with Northeast Regional, and that we can continue to have them as a network provider, but the plan that the city has is the largest network that Anthem has available. And it does include providers outside of Missouri, which the individual plan does not, so, uh, we have network providers at Mayo Clinic, and you name it, and your employees are going to be able to go there and get in-network benefits, so. We're hopeful that things will, uh, resolve themselves. If they do not, then you can expect to see me back in here looking at a different plan, because we cannot have you in a plan that doesn't have Kirksville as a network provider. Hope that doesn't happen. But that's my presentation.
And is this, this is an annual cost per employee, is that?
No, that's the total for all medical for employees.
But that's a monthly.
That's a monthly cost.
But like I said, going to the plan, if it's a hundred dollars, it's not, it doesn't.
It doesn't entice me.
No, it wasn't me either, I mean, it doesn't look, it doesn't, no, no savings there.
No, and you're looking at going, you know, to a higher out-of-pocket. I, I just don't think it's the right move unless you were squeezed, and I don't think you're squeezed that hard yet.
Well, that's kind of probably the employees' kind of counter, is already charged policy, or, I mean, David and I've worked there, and I'm sure people do, work there now, give out, try to do good coverage for them, I would think.
This is classified as a gold plan. So it's not the highest, the highest plan is a platinum, and we don't have any platinum offered in this area. And once we start dipping down into silver plans, we have those unfortunate restrictions on coverage like, uh, a lower formulary, less medicines covered, and limitations on office visits, and you know, it is a last resort, you know, someday the city may have to adopt something like that.
But it's basically raising three hundred from last year, is that basically what it's, is what it is, basically, about three hundred a month, what it was like.
And it is tailored by age. So the older employees, uh, have a significantly higher cost. And it is gender neutral, so it doesn't matter if you hire men or women, the rates are the same.
But if, like Kirksville, don't take them, or do you have a Cigna, or any some other, other insurance that you guys do?
We do, we probably look at United Healthcare. Uh, we are also contracted with Etna, uh, and we are contracted with Cigna. So far, those plans that come closest to the plan that the city has now are not as economic as what you currently have. But if you don't have Kirksville as a network provider, then we'll have to research that a little more closely. And see, you know, how you want to address that, but I'm very hopeful that they'll resolve that. Uh, we identified, uh, eight hundred policyholders in this area that are with Anthem on the individual side, and about seven hundred employees on group plans. So that's a lot of people for Northeast, and that's just our agency. And we're not the smallest agency, uh, but there is no larger agency for helping to answer Anthem in this area. So we figured we had a little clap to say. And we levied that on your behalf. Any questions? I believe you have a copy of the full renewal, Margaret?
Uh, yes, I received a copy.
It has the breakdown by employee. I'll say, if you need another copy, I have one here.
Yes, no, I, yes, I did receive that.
And right now, the city pays the cost for employees?
Yes, the city pays a hundred percent, that's, that's one of the good benefits that the city employees receive, how they don't.
And that is a very desirable perk. Most employers do not pay a hundred percent.
Uh, courthouse is thirty-seven dollars, I think, every ten.
The employees don't receive the, the big wages, and they don't have a retirement plan as such, so the employee health insurance is a benefit they do receive. And most cities, well, all cities in Northeast Missouri pay a hundred percent for their employees, cities, not necessarily other companies. But I have checked before with cities, and cities tend to pay the hundred percent of their employees.
And I have another group, another city that's renewing, uh, June first, and their rates are very comparable to yours. Calvin, about the same size. They've also been with Anthem for about fifty years.
That's what, we have a long, long history with Anthem.
Since eighty-six.
I'll make a motion, we stick with the current plan.
Okay.
All in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Uh, let's see, Joseph's not here, but we got that picture first.
Not giving that to everyone.
Yeah, for, uh, building from that, Joseph Campbell. No storage building, East Jackson, twenty by twenty-two, whole barn, ten foot tall, wood and ten sides, building itself. It's gonna be a storage building, I'm presuming it's what's.
Yes, I had a conversation with him, it's storage only, yes, because he's losing, they're selling to Mark Twain, so he's losing some storage there.
And I'm presuming he's done the measurement, it was two foot from property line, four foot from the alley, we're getting too close on.
What's the east side on, off, off the, how it was either, like, east, do we have east?
No, I just, like, I can't beat right on.
Right, you know, well, I said, you know, somebody was gonna build something, and then we said, well, wait until you're honest, four, two or three feet, you know, a foot, so.
Right.
I don't, is there a?
So I'm thinking if it doesn't come out any farther than, uh, what I call the bone garage, which is actually in the, you know, boy, by that property, yes. But anyway, that has a garage right down the alley, as long as it, no parts in that.
Some of them pretty tight, pretty, pretty close to the alley, so, yeah, I wouldn't say.
Yeah, I know Joe looked at it.
What's that?
This, the lead band.
So, no problem with, on the alley, off the four foot behind.
Four feet away is on.
There's no farther out than what the others are.
Snow water, sir, down that alley, goes down the road, so.
I'm making a motion for the building for a minute, for Joe, Joseph, Ken.
Joseph.
Ryan.
All seconded out.
Motion been made, seconded, all in favor? All opposed? And we got, uh, the proposal on, uh, lead band ordinance, Margaret, do you know more about kind of what this is?
Yeah, uh, DNR did their inspection of our water department like last September, and so then, like, in October, when they uh, sent their report, and they make recommendations of things that we should be doing differently, well, one of the things they mentioned was that we should update our lead band ordinance. So we, uh, they sent a model ordinance, and we, uh, sent that to our city attorney, the model ordinance, and uh, our current ordinance, we had one many years ago, and so Tom got this to us the other day. This is, uh, standard ordinance that would be for us. So, uh, we have copies available for anybody in the.
Copy, hell, I don't have them.
Do you not have a copy? Let's see. And did I give you one? Did I give you one earlier?
Yes.
I'll take one.
And you have one. So this would be bill number seven oh.
I think that's sound good.
Yes.
Seven oh two.
So, any questions on this?
Yeah, we already, as I said, we already had a lead band ordinance in place, and this is just a slight update, whatever be in our recommending.
So we're all in compliance with that, aren't we?
Right, yeah, we're in compliance, we've done the, the water samples, they'll do spot checks, like, to the ten places in town, and we, you know, have passed that, and so then we didn't have to do tests for so many years. So, yeah, we're in compliance.
Nothing to do on that, enough.
No, there's nothing we're going to be doing different, there's not gonna be any new, newer different test, it's essentially the same.
Move on then.
Uh, if, if the board, yeah, would like to move forward with it, like, we can read it by title only. Unless you want, you know, wait a month, but otherwise.
Sales went forward.
So it is. Okay, it's bill number seven oh two, proposed ordinance seven oh two, an ordinance establishing a lead ban in public and private drinking water plumbing.
Adopt that policy.
And we probably should read it twice.
Read it twice.
I was, I mean, read it by title once. I was, I mean, read it by title once, we did, so we should read it. We wanna read it by title again.
Ordinance established a lead band in public, private drinking water plumbing.
Yeah, that's by title. So, Rick, do you want to make a motion to adopt it?
Yep.
Okay.
I'll second.
I'll second.
All in favor? Opposed?
Okay.
I guess you're ready for Joe, for your report.
Can you all get a copy of my support? This is kinda deceiving, with it showing a hundred and ten percent of the design for it, but it's just the weather, it's the rain. Yeah, it's still doing as it should. Everything done, it's looking good. Uh, meeting all our efficiency rates, removal rates and everything, so. All that's going well. The UV system is installed. Those are the three of you that are new here, we're waiting on contractor to come and rebuild it. The new ballast is in, involves new seals and everything. We had to put it in because it couldn't get, he swamped, so we definitely had to have it in by first sample. So it's in and running. It's, it's doing good enough to treat the water as of now, but it needs, there's, and we're just on the list. He said it gets to us soon as he can. So, it's just got a couple bulbs that are out right now, so. But it's in, it's running, meeting all our, all our standards there, so. My list is very short and simple. The weather just won't cooperate quite yet. Hopefully it straightens up there another week or so, we can actually start covering some ground. We got all our water leaks finally fixed. Uh, we fixed the last one right after we done it, the sewer plant. Knocked on wood, it's been going well since then. I don't know what's going on there. The pipe is pretty thin and, and, uh, keep having trouble, we're gonna have to find a way to either keep the, the new setup from hammering the water line or just put a new water line in, either way.
Where's that at?
At the sewer plant. Got a new water stream. Three leaks, so, and we've lost quite a bit of water down there. We've been trying to do some ditch cleaning, some trash cleanup and stuff like that. Didn't brush, we've put road tube in. I'm here for Julie Smith, seems like she's very pleased with the way it went. Uh, we've rocked some driveways, rocked the road out here behind the lake. And then the county rocked the dam and our portion for us. So everything out there's in really good shape. I drove it, yeah, last Friday. Everything looks really good out there. I cut this inlet down here at Monticello on fifteen where they put that, uh, tube in a while back, the state did. They just cut a small inlet on the side of the tube. We went down there and we cut it as big as we could without getting into a joint. There's a ban there, so we cut it as big as we could. Try and get rid of some more water for them. You have that down, lift station cleaning and maintenance. Lift stations are all looking pretty good. I'm gonna have to get some work done on the lift station at Farm Shop. I know, we talked about it before, and, uh, I need to get Chuck Johnson or someone over here, electrician wise, to move the junction box for all the wiring, where it all wires in for the floats and controls and everything. It's inside the pit. Worst place you could ever put anything, looked environment. So, they're gonna move the, put a box outside and just run a piece of conduit down through the wall. And then put all new floats in because the floats are pretty generic.
Yeah.
That were used. It's just something that we're gonna have to do, and then it's gonna.
And then put the next doorway.
It's gonna be a little costly, but we'll have to get some bits and get it done, so.
So, it's our new lift station.
Yeah. But, um, and then they put the little pumps in. If we can get the float system and everything fixed, where they're working around constantly having to mess with the float, try and keep some, readjusted. We get good floats in there that are gonna work properly, we'll see how the, the smaller pumps handle. We're probably gonna have to put the bigger pumps in. We have them, it's just getting it done. It's just gonna have to shut the whole thing down and try and redo it. Since this has been discussed some previously, it's just can't do anything right now. Can't get it, can't get it, this equipment close to it right now.
That wasn't redone with the sewer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Though it was done after the sewer project.
There was a, are we talking?
Sewer project money, like, leftover money.
The new list, that's not a new list.
Yeah.
That was on Klinger's list, wasn't it?
This is the one that they got it away from over at Plant Millers.
Right.
The, the Farm Shop.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that, that addition.
He said, yeah, I just thought you were talking about farm.
I may have said farm, I meant to say farm drop. I may have said farm drop. Oh, okay.
Smoke in your ears.
So.
Yeah, so to me, it's really.
I went, went through and cleaned them all up the best I could. There's still a little more cleanup work needs to be done, but. Uh, mowers are all ready to go. Whatever dries out, new blades, oil changes and everything's ready to go. And I did finally get some cold patch last week. I got twenty-six tons. And I'm waiting on another twenty-five tons, twenty-five, twenty-six more tons to get it started. I spoke for fifty tons for the first part of the year, and then they're supposed to be back later in the year to make more. If we need more, if we have a, more of a game plan by then, I just didn't wanna, almost give for a ton of it and not have a game plan. But at least we got something now. Supposed to be nice towards the end of this week. And once it warms up, we'll start getting the holes. It, it won't stick to the hole right now. It's, it's a waste, it's a waste of time right now.
Where did it, where did it come from?
It come from Laughlin's, they made it out here at the quarry.
It's not just that regular pipe with the mix.
It's the state mix, the state spec mix, they're making from Motoc.
So. We got that, the good pothole mix, which we done from, it's hot mix, so. Yeah, down around.
It was.
There's an office in there, yeah. It's real expensive, but you can see where we put it in there, it stays. It may break out over here, but it won't break out where you put it down. So it, it is expensive, but it isn't expensive.
Yeah.
You know, especially up on, I think that we used to go down and get my co-op one, we got for us, like fifteen ton there a couple years ago, you know, or something, didn't we? And it's.
It's you gotta have it that day.
It's like a hundred twenty-five dollars a ton, but it's, it's well worth the money.
This was fifty-three.
Especially like up on one of these main streets, it's hard for you to get them out in front of, like I had up here. By the courtyard, running them a street, there's, you know, there's a deep, you know. And that stuff, when you put it in, you know, if you don't put oil under that cold mix, it won't stay.
Yeah.
So, I've done too many streets, it ju, it won't stay. If you don't oil underneath it and stuff, you know. Where the, where that other, you know, for just potholes, you know, you know, you might wanna look into maybe getting, you know, maybe a truckload of it, you know, this other's good, but I'm just saying for the, you know. Haven't you seen that pothole mix?
I see on top of it, if you are.
You don't have to put nothing on it, you just put it in hole, it ain't wet.
No, the, the cold mix.
Oh, yeah, and then just put rubber on top of the challenge, yeah, that, it's just, it's just pothole mixes what it is, it's just real fine and, and just, you know, but, you know, that's just whatever Joe thinks it, you know, I don't know, you've been around.
Very little, I mean, I, I never, I didn't do a hole over the street sign.
Right. But it is, it is, it's really good for them little sharp potholes, you can't be putting them in pots. But the little ones, it's, you know, something that might be an idea that we might wanna look into it, you know.
Yeah.
But, we got some more tubes ordered. I've got three more tube projects in the makings when all our tubes finally start showing up. We're kinda running a little low on the ones we needed. And, uh, I got two more, two valve bopses to dig up from this last snow, so broke two of them. Locator told you for that, and then Jason, Jason backed down for his CDL test again tomorrow. Just barely missed it last week, so hopefully this will go well. Other than that, that's all I've really got. Unless you guys got questions for me.
Down there at Sewer Plant, the water line? How far do you think we gotta go to replace that?
Where's breaks at? I mean, where's it been?
It's been right at the building and.
So they've been pretty close together where they're breaking.
Just outside the fence and at the ninety where it goes back up the driveway to the road. Been, all three breaks have been right there.
Yeah.
So.
We had some on that too, tied.
Rick was down there that one night, it's, it's thin.
It's cheapest they could use.
Yeah. So it may just be a weak spot right through there or something.
What's going down to, is like, any water meter, I guess it would be a water meter to the ball diameter.
There's water meter at the pump house that does all the water.
Yeah, I didn't know if we'd come to pump house and stretch across.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Get some locates, with all, all your, all your phone lines and everything runs right down the driveway and then up the road. So you might be able to come across and just come straight across the lot and go right through the fence and just around the, the ditch and straight into the back of the building. You won't have to deal with nothing. Right in the back of the building is a pain. It's, it's a better way to do it. That day, we dug it up in there. There's two gas lines, four phone lines, a sewer line and a water line, all in the same hole.
Yeah.
It wasn't much fun that day. But if you go across the, the open field there, like we were saying, the lot, there shouldn't be nothing across there.
Be ending up there.
Cause I, the last time I called the locator, I had them located all the way from the road back, just so we could see where everything was. And so far, that looks like probably the best plan, if we just.
Rear rank.
Lay it there, yeah, reroute a little bit, just laying there. Once you get outside the fences, it'll be the easiest digging anybody's ever been around.
Yep.
So.
Crossed our lots.
Yeah.
Thought anyway, that you didn't have a problem with what, what we could do there.
We've lost a lot of water this year down there.
And if you dig it up down there, you know, you get balls, you can come along to, we're keeping the digging from the road, main driveways and stuff. Better if we can.
So hopefully this will kinda, maybe we, maybe we just had some thin spots, some bad spots, I mean, but we'll see, time will tell. Anything else? What you guys doing? Well, been a busy month. Um, I love you guys had a chance to look over much on the report. Last week was really busy. I was planning on doing a lot of the personal contacts with, uh, you know, we got the citywide cleanup coming up. I, last week was just unusually busy. So, uh, I plan on this week to do a lot more of the personal contacts, get people down to, you know, to take advantage of our cleanup. We got a lot of them that needs to, so, but I think this week we'll be able to get a lot more contacts made. I know you guys have any questions as far as the report itself goes?
Been busy.
Yeah, that, this month was unusually busy. Um, we, not on here, we did have several slide-offs, not this Sunday, Sunday before, and that's still come, come through. Other than that, if you do not have any questions, I have no requests, so.
So on these cleanups, um, if you give them a couple warnings in here or do anything, then.
Then we give them, I mean, you give them a warning to get the stuff cleaned up, you know, and if they take advantage of the cleanup like they should. If they don't, then we start issuing tickets and fines and whatnot until they, until they do. Yeah, they'll keep paying until they get cleaned up. But I like making the personal contacts a lot better than some of the letters. Um, I got a lot of positive feedback actually for making the personal contacts rather than, you know, sending the letters and I think, I like that's the way we need to go. Until, you know, if they don't pay attention to us, you know, then we can do something else, but I like the personal contacts a lot, a lot better. If you have any questions, I don't have anything.
You had said something to me about stop signs.
Yeah, uh, um, several, well, it's been, I don't know, several months ago, I had some questions about the stop signs on, what is it, Marion Street and the one on Fulton Street. Uh, the one on Fulton Street is, I guess half in the middle of the block, like we need to do some, do something with that stop sign, it's not in a good place.
Maybe?
Yep. And the one on Marion, the one on Marion Street, I don't know if you guys are familiar with the one that I'm talking about?
They're a block apart.
No, they're not on a true four-way.
Um, it's right on.
At Baker and Marion?
Baker.
Baker and Marion and Cotty, is it Cotty and Marion?
No.
Baker.
Baker and Marion, and then Fulton.
I think the one on Fulton probably needs to be removed and probably without too much discussion. Oh, I mean, research, cause it's, it's in a bad spot.
You know, the way I look at it, guys, a lot of it, that's what God is. Let him look at it and see, he gonna think they're safe, or the stop sign need to be moved, you know, that's.
For the, for planes.
Yeah, you know, but they're not, you know.
And we, several, I mean, when I worked for the city before, the city paid a lot of money to have, it was part of a grant. It was a lot of money to have everything mapped and experts, where we need signs, where we need to take out signs. I think we need to get away from every time somebody complains to throw up a stop sign.
Right, cause that's not always just answered.
We're getting ourselves in trouble by.
Slow traffic down.
I agree with them, that Fulton one, it's middle of it.
But I, I think the Marion one, the one on Marion and Baker, I think we probably need to talk to, you know, more, talk again to the, uh, neighbors around there that it affects and see what their thoughts are on that one. But I think the one on Fulton Street for sure is one that probably needs to be removed.
I think that one with Marion and Baker would be.
Well, like I said, it's something we need to research, and something we need to ask for, I mean, I.
It does slow it down some of the way.
They still block it there.
I know, they, but there's, I've noticed some people, you just come that way, don't go that way.
Yeah, they go around.
Yeah, they go around, yeah, I've noticed that.
Any of those streets that go that way.
That's fine, just.
Yeah.
Well, like I said, the one on Marion and Baker, um, I can see somewhat of the purpose for them. I think we need to, you know, actually research that, talk to the neighbors, see what they think. You know, I don't wanna pull a stop sign that, you know, that, you know, the neighbor, you know, likes it there, you know. But I do think that we probably need to get away from every time somebody complains to throw up a sign, so. But like I said, Fulton, I think it needs, I think it needs to go.
That's out of place, sir.
So what does it take first to move it?
You gotta tell Joe.
Or is it?
Is that Jack White?
Jack White?
Yeah.
Kind of middle.
It's one of, it's, it's a little, I, I'm sure it probably slows the trucks down, it cuts through there.
Well, if they don't run through it.
But, but they don't, I don't think it'll stop it anyway, so.
Marion and Baker, I, before, when I talked to people, there were some that didn't like it, some that did like it. I know Donner likes it, or Kim Smith likes it there, you know, the stop sign there, so. I think, it's not ideal, but I'm willing to live with that.
So, do you want a motion then, to remove the one at Fulton? So that we know what we're doing?
I'll vote you.
You want to make a second, all in favor? All opposed? I know one, especially when it gets into summer in school, it's out the stuff that, that North Street, cause I used to live down there. Cause it goes from Rice upon this, there are the burning zones, where they, you know, I used to scare the kids on that street. And I don't know really what to do, but it's such a long stretch and so much traffic over the ball field. And roads in there, and it's, I don't know, you know, later, you know, down the road, just no control.
We got the same problem with Lafayette.
Yeah.
From the four-way.
Yeah, of course.
All the way down, there's no stop or no nothing.
So I.
So I think, I think we need to be one.
I don't know how to do it over there, cause like I said, no intersections down through there, and it's a bad spot, and just so much traffic comes off fifteen going to that ballpark. Everybody's running. The lot, crazy in summer, for the kids, like I said, four kids on it, there's so many kids walking down that, kids from apartments and stuff, it's good.
There's a lot.
One kid get headed, be one too many.
There's a lot of foot traffic. I think there's a lot more foot traffic down North Street than there usually is. So I think, you know, it's just a matter of finding a good place for it.
Right, right.
And you don't wanna stop too far before.
And you don't wanna stop too far, too close to going up that hill.
No, it's just one of those, it's, it's a bad spot, like I said, we have an intersection, we could maybe do it, but if they don't, so, but just something to consider and think about.
Bumps.
Yeah, and they're not, but it does slow down, but it works, that's.
Yeah.
Well, there for a while, we had complaints about Vernon's big trucks.
Yeah.
Ruining that road, and I thought, well, that's gotta be a plus, you know, the roads aren't very good, but it's at the other end, it's not in the middle.
Anyway, anybody else gonna hang for Ryan?
Thanks, guys, congratulations.
Ah, so we need to appoint some people for signing checks.
Uh, yeah, you need to, uh, appoint, okay, city attorney and.
Okay, so we need to vote on that, uh, for Tom Dudley, city attorney, uh, Paul Collins for treasurer, Kathy Ford for collector, Margaret for clerk, and Kirk Goodman for emergency manager director, so that's what we need to vote.
So if that's what, if your recommendation.
Uh, yeah, recommendation is to appoint those.
The board needs to, uh, make a motion in a second.
Make a motion if you wanna vote on that.
Make the motion that we appoint those people.
Did I name them? Basically, it's the same.
Same, it's what we have.
Retain them.
Retain the same ones, so that's, uh.
I second it.
With Ryan.
All in favor? Opposed? So, then we gotta get to, uh, we need more people for signing the checks.
Uh, Rick, we're currently, there's one that's authorized to sign, and so we need.
Donner, and there go.
And Mayor, yeah, we need four.
It helps Margaret to help.
Two that she can sign. So we need to add Steve and Dot and Donner, and we need someone to make a motion to.
I guess I want to.
Make a motion.
Okay.
And then we gotta, uh, vote to appoint Clarence Cannon Water to mission representatives. So we need one, I need it all, all.
Yeah, Eric was currently our representative and Ryan was the alternate, so.
I'm fine with it, but whatever, you know, who matters, whatever people wanna, you know, appoint there, whoever wants, it doesn't matter to me.
They want it, yes, I'm mine for you, but.
Well.
Yeah. So, and then, you must have done it all, you, you say you would still be the alternate, so, if that's the consensus of everybody, or, or, vote, if you want.
Should we vote?
That would be fine, please, make a motion.
Make a motion to appoint Mayor, so, Clarence Cannon and Ryan.
All in favor?
Second, I believe.
Opposed?
So, did David second, okay.
I agree, right, David?
Yes, ma'am. Okay, then we need flood plane administrator?
Yes, the mayor has.
Yeah, you just done everything, didn't you?
Nobody stood up. You're under compliant, you are under compliance as of now, maps have been redone, it's been remapped, everything's compliant. You're, you're good.
Yeah, I told him that we're, we're good, so, yeah, so.
It's basically, you show up, they tell you what you're gonna do, but you do have to show up.
It's just kinda having somebody.
Yeah, just kinda having somebody's name there.
Yeah, if they show up, they're gonna have somebody say, yep, you're in compliance.
Okay, so if you continue that, I will send that.
Probably easier to get hold of me, like I say.
Okay.
Where I'm at, so if I show up the middle of the day, well, it's, I'm not a, you know, fifty yards away, so, so, not very far away.
Okay, we'll do that.
Oh, I guess, I need to make a motion on that too.
Uh, that would be fine. Motion making.
I guess, make a motion.
I'm voting.
Okay, Rick. I'll second. Yeah, I'm second.
All in favor? All opposed?
Okay.
All right, now I'm done. Got any comments, I guess, anybody questioned, any?
You want to just stop?
Extension council, I was on it, I had to go off, so someone needs to be appointed for extension council.
Uh, yeah, extension council.
It's always noon, I know it's work.
It's always, yeah, they have the.
If they can move it a little bit.
We gotta have it at twelve noon.
Yeah.
Is it this first Tuesday or?
It's always the second.
Second Tuesday, I believe, a lot of times it's the night after city, just depends on how falls, but it's the second Tuesday of every month. And they serve me a light lunch, not much, but just a light lunch.
You're out of town and you're busy at noon and you're, and you're busy, well, that'll be done.
You got a winner that bad.
You'd like to be on the extension.
How about that, that work for you?
Yeah, it'll work for me.
They search for you, yeah.
Yeah, they search.
I think they've aged you.
They'll send you a reminder.
Yeah.
Yeah, you'll get a reminder on your cell phone.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Once they tell them that you're on, yeah.
Yeah, I'll be sure of that.
I just had a question for Joe.
Yes.
Uh, dumpsters, I guess, have we got some of those secured for?
Yes, they'll deliver the first two, uh, Tuesday morning, early, and they'll be ready to go, and they told me to call that afternoon and let them know if we needed two more, or one more, or what my thoughts were, and they would be ready to go. Yeah, that's next Tuesday.
What days clean up?
Seventeen to eighteen.
Seven to seven.
Once you start running water.
Next year, next week.
Next week, yeah.
We'll be nice though.
Anybody else got anything?
Kathy made some copies for you all to take and read for next month. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, I got one.
I hope everybody's getting one now.
Got her hell cutter this time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, folks.
You hanging out, Tommy?
No.
Doc?
For now.
No.
Okay. I don't have anything. Glad to be here, be glad to work with you guys, I'm looking forward to it, so. And I, I know we thanked you, but we really appreciate what you done today, Eric, appreciate it. And I don't have anything, so, I guess.
Entertained in a motion to adjourn?
Yeah. Second. Thank you, adjourn, all in favor?
I can call Jake if I.
You can adjourn.
Well, I can't.
When they called Jake one time.